You guide us through this meeting, bless us, and give us the thought and knowledge to do what is pleasing in your eyes. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh, Ms. Tucker. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is citizen comment. Are there any citizens that would like to address the board? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearings. The first item is a special exception of Timothy and Sherri Carton, and I believe that is for a short-term rental. And Mr. Tyler Creasy will be giving the board some background.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Board. Special exception 2022-603 by Timothy and Sherri Carton is, as Mr. Martin stated, a special exception for the rental of a short-term tourist, rental of a dwelling in the A1 Agriculture Residential District. The location for the request is 243 Christian Springs Road and is further identified as tax map 81-3-8. A little bit about the property. It's zoned A1, as I mentioned, is about five acres large and is surrounded by A1 property as well with single-family dwellings to the north, south, east, and west. It's in general conformity with the rest of the area. And if you recall, a few months ago, you approved a special exception for an Airbnb, not exactly a next-door neighbor to this property, but very close. Inner packet are the requirements for a short-term residential dwelling as well as staff's recommended conditions. Are there any questions at this time?
Board. Okay, is the petitioner here, Cartons, would you like to address the board? If you'd give us your name and the district in which you are located.
Hi, my name is Sherri Carton, and my husband, Tim, is sitting over there. My husband retired last year after 44 years of military service, and I retired like three years ago. I did 10 years military, but somebody had to raise the children. Anyway, we'd like to help bring a little bit of tourism to the area and kind of supplement our income now that we're both retired and living on fixed incomes. So, you know, we have a large, beautiful home, and we'd love to have others, you know, enjoy it as much as we do. And we do live on the premises, so we're there to monitor guests at all times.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Cart. All right, we might call you back if we have any questions. Is there a Mr. Robert Smith that would like to speak?
Robert Smith, I live at 221 Christian Springs Road. I am an adjoining landowner to Tim and Sherri. My wife and I and one other family have the unique position in that in the previous approved Michelle Knight's house and Tim and Sherri's house, I live in between both of them, okay? So I can see one out of one side of the house, one out of the other side of the house. Tim and Sherri have been very open and honest from the time they started the foundation. What they pretended on doing, I've been in the room numerous times. The one thing she didn't share with you was they finished the room. So they have sweat equity in that house. Again, if they never told me they had a guest, I'd never know. So I have absolutely no problem with the approval of this, even though I'm in between two, it's no issue. Any questions for me?
Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? All right, hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve special exception 2022-603 with the Planning Commission's recommendations and conditions.
There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations, good luck with your project. All right, next item on the agenda, I believe, is an ordinance to discuss for the transient occupancy tax, and that is Mr. Popovich, our county attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Commissioner of the Revenues Association had requested that the commissioners of the revenue throughout the Commonwealth develop a uniform means of trying to solidify and understand where short-term rentals were located and who is paying the tax for what property so that there's a means of tracking or better tracking where these monies are coming from. So this is simply just changing the county's ordinance to track with what they propose as the model ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Popovich. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? All right, hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. And just for transparency and full disclosure, I own an Airbnb here in Amherst County. We rent primarily through the two vendor platforms, Airbnb and VRBO. But I know a lot of people who own them here have their own websites or just do it through word of mouth or other platforms. If you rent through the platforms I just named, they automatically take care of the taxes and send the taxes into the treasurer. What tool do we have to make sure that everybody's being treated fairly? For those people where it's not done automatically, that we still know that they should be sending taxes in?
Right, but I think that's all part of the registration, short-term registration processes. Am I not correct, Mr. Brown?
That is correct. We also share our approvals with the Commissioner of Revenue so they can match records.
So as long as somebody does the right process as far as the zoning, gets the permit and all that, then it's automatically taken care of regardless of what platform they use?
We have to periodically send them to the Commissioner, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the board adopt ordinance number 2023-2 as presented.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. If there's no discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Ordinance is passed. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Board, are there any questions or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as.
Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Wade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Consent agenda is passed. Okay, next is Firefly update by Mr. Gary Wood.
Can I bring my... The lady actually knows what's going on up with him?
Absolutely.
So thanks for giving us an opportunity to come up. Melissa Gay, an Amherst... Melissa Gay, an Amherst County resident, is going to give you the important stuff on the statistics at the end. I'm going to touch on a couple of things, give you a status of the construction in the county with CVC's fiber and Firefly's fiber that'll go well beyond CVC. So first, I want to show you a map. I learned a long time ago that I enjoyed things in color when I was in maybe first or second grade. So the blue areas are already built out and in service today. All of those have the network fully operational. The green areas will be the next ones where we have fiber construction. And I'll talk a little bit about these areas in a little bit, but you can see up toward Piney River from Temperance kind of over to the county line up, Big and Little Piney. And then in the Wenton area, kind of tying in between where we had built before with the CARES projects in the south side of 29, up across through Wenton and up in some of those other areas to tie all the way back up to the Wark Barn area. Then after that, you see that this... The lines on here designate what we've called service zones. So that's the areas that we'll be doing kind of in pieces. And the way we separate them is by how far the light can travel from our hut. We can go about roughly 30 miles to really provide better service and give us some options for higher speeds in the future. We try to keep it a little less than that. But you'll see a slice that's kind of our Pleasant View slice that comes just west of 60. And then there's an Elon piece that goes down to Stapleton in the south. And then there's a pink area that's Sweet Hill. So those are the areas that... All the areas we'll build, the blue is in service, the green is the next for construction. Some of it's already under construction, and that's what the next slide I'll touch on. I think, yes. So here presently, those blue areas, we have about 1,450 homes and businesses we pass, about 900 of them pre-registered for service. We have most all of those connected, although we still have probably a couple hundred in that Temperance up to Route 60 area of the Central Virginia Electric Co-op territory still to finish. So the fiber backbone is completed. We're still putting in new services every day. We've got crews who are working up there. And we're working in different areas. Some of the areas furthest up the mountain, we already have service, up at Wiggins Spring Road and Pedlar areas. We also have some around Temperance, and they're filling them in as quickly as they can. But that's a really good take rate, what we call our take rate, which is the number of people who take service out of those who are offered when we first come through. The next set of service zones includes that area around Big and Little Piney and over to tying into the CVC Temperance area. So it's everywhere that Appalachian Power had electric service, that is between the CVC lines and the county line back up in that area around Lowe'sville and north. We have about 90% of the fiber up in that area. Then we've got to do splicing, then we'll do some final connections. So that's moving along really well. The Wenton area, we are waiting on Verizon. Verizon actually owns a few poles that have electric service on it in that area and some other parts of Amherst. And APCO has finished their make-ready, Verizon is finishing their make-ready. We expect in the next two to three weeks that we'll start putting fiber up in that area. We'll put the fiber up, go in and splice it and make the final connections. And then shortly after that, probably within the next month after that, maybe six weeks, we'll have that Pleasant View area from Sardis up through Pleasant View and up to the top of the mountain ready to start fiber construction. That fiber construction will run on into the summer and then splicing, et cetera. So those are the next three areas that we'll have fiber built in. Those together go by about 1,200 more homes. We've just started marketing to some of those areas. We've been hitting about 60% of people take service, so we expect we'll end up with around 700 more homes there. Then there's the rest of the area around Elon, down Stapleton, Sweet Hills. That is in make-ready engineering phase, which means Appalachian Powers is doing their preparation for the engineering side to decide how much work they need to do on their poles. Then they'll have make-ready construction come in. After the make-ready construction, we come in and put up our fiber. So that's a quick snapshot of where we're working, where we already have service, and where we will be working. And now I'm going to let Melissa give you a few notes on the actual statistics to the construction and then also talk about how we communicate with folks as we're going through construction so you'll know what your constituents are seeing and hearing in terms of trying to keep them up to date.
I'm going to take that back. I don't have my classes this evening. All these screens, and I still can't see. Good evening, I'm Melissa Gay, Communications Manager, Member Services Manager at Central Virginia Electric Cooperative and also at Firefly Fiber Broadband. And it's nice to see you again, also an Amherst County resident. So it's my pleasure to be here.
Let me switch your slide.
Yes, we'll switch the slide.
There you go.
All right, so we've got big news here. We like to see those big numbers. $15.1 million has already been invested in Amherst County to date. Our total passings with the RISE project, the CBC Fiber project and the CARES project is 7,000, which is a staggering number. I don't know if you're keeping up with the news, but we passed our 15,000 customer milestone in October. So, and we're getting ready to celebrate our 20,000. This is your hint to save the date for an early April celebration. So to think that Amherst County will have 7,000 of those passings is pretty phenomenal for the county. Of the electric accounts served by the cooperative, there are 1,020, and the rest would be served by Appalachian Power for the most part with the 530 miles of fiber total in the project. The RISE project investment in Amherst County is $30 million, and the total CVC and CARES investment is $14 million. So a lot of dollars, a lot of passings, and a lot of lives that have been changed in the county due to the connectivity to Firefly for a reliable and affordable internet straight to their homes that's not reliant on trees and weather and seasons and bandwidth. So it's our pleasure to be here, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're making every effort to reach the residents of Amherst County, to let them know of this opportunity. We are doing a series of mailings that go to each of the areas. We'll start with a data collection. We are very mindful to let them know when contractors will be on their property, first and foremost, and second, that they have this amazing opportunity to sign up for service. So we start with a data collection letter that talks to them about folks walking around and just figuring out, is the pole really there? What side of the road is it on? How far is it? And then our engineers will get involved when they look at the staking and make sure, figure out where they think the fiber will go and make the decisions for which poles can take the fiber, which poles can't take the fiber. Maybe they're too short because there's too much on the pole or the hardware needs to be switched around up top or anchors just to secure the pole. So that's our make-ready construction. We are partnering with Appalachian Power in those areas to send that mailing in partnership with Appalachian Power. So we're using their mailing list to make sure we're getting it to the PO boxes in our rural parts of the service territory rather than mailing to a service address. So we're pleased for that partnership. We also let them know when the fiber's going up. Most of these projects are overhead, so the fiber will follow the power. If your power is underground, then your fiber will go in underground. It'll be installed in a conduit that is bored into the ground. If it's overhead, then your fiber will follow your power overhead and come into the home near your meter base on the side. So we talk to them about construction, and then we'll talk about the actual time to sign up and have our town halls where we have a virtual meeting. Everybody can log in to Zoom, and we walk them through the process and the service offerings. And if that's not enough, then everybody in the area who has not taken advantage of this wonderful opportunity, then we mail a last chance postcard. We say, hey, 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 don't miss out. We're, you know, we're getting ready to pull out of your area, and we want to make sure that you sign up if you so choose. So lots of communications to the members, which is how I think we're reaching some of these take rates.
Right, yeah, so we have three or four different male contacts to each resident about the different phases to kind of keep them up to date on where they are.
Yes.
So that, and that's important to us because that helps cut down on the number of calls that hopefully you get, that we get, and helps people kind of know where they are in the phase.
Absolutely, and we revamped our website. We got a lot of feedback from our county partners, actually. It was county administrators and boards who helped us to see the light and revamp our website so that you can search by your county, go to Amherst County, just look and see what's going on that impacts you as a resident, and to see all the projects there with the Chevron that tells you at which phase your project is currently. So we were excited to roll that out. We update that every two weeks after our big project meetings. So every two weeks, we're on looking at our 14 county pages to make sure that those Chevrons are in the right spot.
So I thought about some of these communications things after we made our slide deck. So we didn't have a communication slide. We'd be glad to send that over in writing if you'd like. But that's a quick snapshot of where we are, what we've spent so far, and kind of what the total project will look like for Amherst County. And we'll be glad to take any questions.
Board.
What is that website again?
That is www.fireflyva.com. And then across the top, there'll be a tab named Projects, and you do search your county, and you can click from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I do have a question, self-serving. I have kids. All right, so you mentioned the Wenton area, which is Clifford. Right. Clifford Baptist Church, Tuscaloosa, which is down Fletcher's Level Road. Is that within the next...
That can go backwards. Yes, so we're waiting for Verizon to finish some make-ready, and then within the next two to three weeks, we'll start putting fiber up there. I think we have about 45 or 50 miles of fiber. I'm going to give some wild guesses here, and Melissa will get after me because I haven't checked to see if it coordinates with the website. But I would think that that would be done, we'll put the fiber up within a couple of months. It goes up fairly fast. The splicing that comes after that will probably add another six to eight weeks. All of that may be a little quicker if weather coordinates. Could be a little longer if other things break down. But within the next three to four months, we should probably have that area ready to do final connections.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Oh, okay, Mr. Brown.
I hope nobody's recording that.
I do, I have one question as well, Mr. Wood. I give an update to the Board of Supervisors every month on when you guys are going to be done with Amherst County.
Right.
What is your projection on finishing all of this up? What are we looking at?
The RISE project and the VOTI grant has a hard deadline of August, mid-August of 2025. So we have to finish up all 14 counties, all 4,500 miles by then. Amherst presently is running, I would say, in the first half of 2025. I would say the first quarter, but every time I give a date, it slips somewhere along the line between here and there. But that's a guess right now as to where we would finish up in Amherst. We're kind of going, starting in that Piney River. Well, we did the CVC piece, and we're starting in the northeast, and we're kind of going in a counterclockwise direction. So we'll get Pleasant View, then we'll build the Elon Hut in Elon, and then Sweet Hills will probably be the last piece, which I hate to tell anybody they're last. Last is still pretty fast for bringing fiber to the area. But I would guess that we would be building in there second half of next year, and we'll be doing connections over into early 2025.
All right, thank you so much.
All right.
Ma'am, I know you have a question. I can't let you come up, but if it's for the board, we have another citizen comment. If it's for Firefly, I'm sure they'd love to talk with you out in the hallway. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board. The next item on our agenda is a resolution for Ms. Sarah Lou Christian. And this was sent to us by the Amherst County Recreation Advisory Board, and they are requesting that we name the River Edge Trail after former Director of Parks and Recreation Sarah Lou Christian. They want to honor her because of her 32 years of service to the county and the hard work put in to make River Edge Park a reality. And if there is no discussion, I would be honored to move that resolution as presented. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Ms. Christian, would you come up? Sarah Lou. No, you cannot get away. We are going to read this wonderful resolution. A resolution naming the trail at River Edge Park after former Director of Amherst County Recreation and Parks, Sarah Lou Christian, approved as deformed by the county administrator. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, one, that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia hereby expresses its thanks to Sarah Lou Christian for her exceptional service to Amherst County as follows. Whereas Sarah Lou Christian served as Amherst County's Director of Recreation and Parks from June 1988 through January 2021, bringing to the position her enthusiasm, passion, and team spirit in providing outstanding knowledge and programs to the Amherst County citizenry. And whereas, as the county's Director of Recreation and Parks for over 32 years, Mrs. Christian initiated numerous activities and programs to build the county's capacity for delivering recreational services. And whereas, Mrs. Christian successfully worked with and contributed to the Madison Heights Youth Baseball, Amherst County Dixie Youth Baseball, and Amherst County Girls Dixie Baseball organizations to build their respective complexes. And whereas, in her 32-plus years with Amherst County, Mrs. Christian was involved in numerous projects such as Jamestown 2007 Commemoration, Amherst County's Sesquah bicentennial celebration, Amherst Live, Piney River Triathlon, Amherst County Fair, park development and installation of restrooms at Mill Creek Lake Park, Thrasher's Lake Park, public swimming at Mill Creek Lake, tennis courts refurbishments, designing and establishing Amherst County Welcome Signs, and the county Historical Society's Annual Bathe Day. And... That's a lot. Whereas, she has proven to be a highly successful community leader during her tenure, allowing the county to expand its parks projects and setting up and managing the county's outdoor festival policy and permits. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia honors Sarah Lou Christian for her contribution to Amherst County Recreation and Parks. Be it further resolved that the board dedicates the trail located at River Edge Park as the Sarah Lou Christian Trail, as memorialized by a plaque on the trail. I want to get a picture of you, too. That would be great. That this resolution shall be in force and effect upon the adoption adopted this 21st day of February 2023. Tom Martin, Chair. And I will sign it here in a few minutes. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to meet this Sarah Lou Christian. She... I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I will say that I'm extraordinarily honored, extraordinarily honored, and I'm humbled beyond words, so I thank you so very much, truly, genuinely. Thank you. And I hope to see you out on the trail sometime.
Absolutely. Okay, board, the next thing on our agenda is the county administrator's report. Mr. Bryant?
I have nothing further to report.
Okay, county attorney's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the only thing I would, uh, bring up at this point is, uh, as you may have read in the newspaper or seen on television, um, a number of opioid defendant firms, companies, corporations have agreed to global settlements that we estimate, uh, in total will amount to an $18.7 billion payout to, uh, localities and states throughout the United States. Um, if these settlements are reached in accordance with the terms contained therein, and with certain incentives, uh, included therein, um, the Virginia share would, is anticipated to be somewhere around $425 million. The actual amount that will come to each individual locality is not yet known, because we have to wait for those incentive numbers to come in, but that's the next round of funding coming this way.
Thank you, Mr. Popovich. Uh, is there any questions for county attorney? All right, very good. Next, uh, part of our agenda is liaison and committee reports. Uh, the first thing is, uh, school board, Ms. Tucker.
Um, I think the budget conversations have taken up most of their time. Uh, they're still talking about some things operationally in the schools. I'm sure most of us have heard about the opt-in or opt-out conversations that are ongoing. I'm very confident that our, our school board is looking at every angle, and they're doing the best that they can, and I don't think you're, no one's going to be 100% pleased, but I think at the end of the day, that they understand what this community's values are, and they will act accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Planning Commission, Mr. Pugh.
Uh, thank, oop, thank you, Mr. Martin. Um, nothing to report, we actually couldn't, uh, we didn't have a quorum, so we were unable to meet, uh, so we will just wait till next month and see what that holds.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Uh, moving back to Ms. Tucker for the agricultural committee.
Um, yeah, the only thing to, excuse me, to report is that they've got a biologist from DWR, DW, golly day, excuse me, a biologist from DWR that will present to the Ag Board about coyotes and control. Uh, so I guess anything that they find out from that that's different than what we've heard, we'll hear about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tucker. All right, we are back to citizen comment. Are there any citizens, uh, desiring to speak to the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to matters from members of the board. Ms. Tucker?
I do have one, one thing, and I had talked to a couple of you all about it. Um, Jeremy, stop me if I get to a point where I shouldn't say anything, but I think this is all open, open. Um, the house behind the Amherst Presbyterian Church and adjoining the Sheriff's Department and the parking lot there, is the old Schrader home, and one of our residents has, has been living there, and in the deed, in the will, it was determined that when the owner died, that that property would revert to the county, and the owner unfortunately passed away back in January. The resident that's staying there is still there, would like to continue to stay until the summertime, uh, when she'll get, she'll, she'll be moving. The point to this is that, that, that's really nice property. The house is beyond repair and would need to be torn down, but the land itself is probably acre and a half, two acres, Jeremy?
Point seven.
Huh?
Point seven.
Point seven. Um, and it's, it's very pretty, close to the town, and so there's, we got to think about what we, things that we would like to do. And one of the things that people have approached me about is turn it into just a small park inside the town. Uh, I think it would lend itself to that, uh, without a lot of money, and I think there's enough stakeholders and people that will be interested in volunteering their time, that I think that we could have something really nice for a very small amount of money. Jeremy, anything else I need to say?
No, I think that's it. I think that, um, it, it, it's, it's really a unique piece of property, because it's positioned, uh, between Amherst Presbyterian Church, the Shopping Center, the Courthouse, and the Sheriff's Department, um, and, you know, I think one of the things we want to do is make sure that we, we get the key stakeholders at the table to make sure that we're, we're talking to the right people and, and come up with a, a good plan for that property.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pugh?
I have nothing.
Wade?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ayers?
No, sir.
Um, I don't really have anything, but I, I'd feel remiss if I didn't say how impressed and appreciative I am of county staff. Uh, they've been working very hard, and it shows, and I appreciate all of you. So with that, is there a matter, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion on the floor, Ms. Ayers, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.